The proposed project doesn't meet the legislation. The city still has $15,000 in our budget to put towards this project as well. So there's a difference there that needs to be made up either through-
Have we been able to explore any grant opportunities?
There could be some, but the timing of it, it just depends on how- There could be some available, but it just depends on the season and the application and the funders criteria.
Have you guys been having a go there? We need to maintenance.
We'd have to ask our Parks and Rec staff, but really the courts have been closed up and locked, and so really any maintenance, they haven't been utilized, so-
Yeah, the grass gets pretty tall in the summer, isn't it?
The courts are far beyond any maintenance or filling of cracks and holes at this point. They have about a 30-year lifespan, and they're in about a year fifty at this point.
So I guess the question is, I would dare say that concrete is easier to maintain than grass and wheat over a long period of time.
Yes, I mean, the courts outlived their natural lifespan, and so at this point, the maintenance of them was essentially discontinued because of the lack of effort and also just putting money into something that was not going to be sustainable, so.
What was the quote from the previous time?
The initial quote, we got seventy thousand, excuse me. And also too, we've got a private contractor willing to do the demolition and lay the base layer, Brock Free. We've got a company in town that's donating the lights so that we can have the park lit at night. I've talked with multiple people at Dominion about maybe using this as a charitable fund to have it built, and everybody told me just wait until y'all are started. And Dominion's more than willing to help with that kind of stuff, but you know, they need to see that the project is happening.
Have you checked in with any confidence such as Lowe's that they may donate or even have grants to assist in a project like that? I know quite a few schools over the years, probably actually over the last about twenty years have put in for grants that they have, that they actually put a whole playground out there with the slides and everything. Because I did in the job, I had as a principal of the school, I got one of them. That was like in 2008, and it was about four thousand dollars they gave them in on that. So they may be able to help with some of those construction costs. Just check.
Right, and I have looked into some of that, and from what I've been told, they mostly just do material, you know, it's mostly what they donate, and so with it being mixed concrete and clay, you know, that's kind of either coming. So I definitely went about every route I think I could find to try to get to where I'm at right now. I feel like I have been in every local business and asked, talked to every person I've met on the streets about it, and you know, it's definitely worth great looking into.
I think your efforts are to be commended. I do think that you get to a point where you've probably maxed out some fundraising efforts, and you've far surpassed our expectations in that. And really, unfortunately, if we don't act and do something, the more we go to continue to ask for money from other businesses, they're going to say, "Well, I gave you money for this, what have you done with it now?" And so I think that, you know, it'd be in the best interest of acting sooner than later to try and get this project implemented.
Okay, all right. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. Ms. Trainor has the next item on DOT.
We were recently approached by the Department of North, excuse me, the Department of Transportation relative to the Bridge Replacement Project, BR-0021, which is the bridge that's intended to replace the current bridge on 48 that crosses the Roanoke River in Halifax and Northampton Counties. It's state-funded, and the project, they have been working to acquire right-of-ways and so forth. The new bridge and the alignment will remove the existing bridge, and there will be another kind of detour or a new truck route installed for trucks entering the paper mill property. As part of this, the intersection near where the paper mill road splits off to the side there, and there's a crosswalk in place, and it actually is where Crossing for the Canal Trail exists. There's a small area of land that is owned by the city adjacent to 48 on the property that is part of the Canal Museum. And DOT is requesting an aerial utility easement and planning to give consideration of $3,375 at the site. This property of area easement is adjacent to NC-48 there, Roanoke Avenue, and DOT activities would be all that are permitted within the DOT right-of-way purposes. The requested action for tonight is to approve the conveyance of the aerial utility easement for NC DOT Bridge Project 0021 for the parcels that are owned by the city and to authorize the mayor to execute the documents. Subject to your questions, that concludes my presentation on this issue.
If you all have any questions about it, if not, we need a motion to approve it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the conveyance of the aerial utility easement for the NC DOT BR-0021 Project Parcels 010 owned by the City of Roanoke Rapids and authorize the mayor to execute the required documents.
All right, the motion by Mr. Steinbach, do you hear a second to his motion? Second by Ms. Bryant, do we have any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, that motion would be approved. Thank you, Mr. Steinbach. And Mr. Davis, ordinance.
All right, so I have the next item on your agenda. Essentially, this is a relatively simple change to bring our city ordinances into conformance with the, with a agreement with the county that was adopted back in September. If you recall then, in, at the second September meeting, we adopted a new interlocal agreement where we agreed with the county as far as the collection of not only our taxes for the city, but then also as part of that, agreed to have the county accept our nuisance abatement liens as something that they would collect by default in their, in their tax foreclosure Prior to that, there had been a dispute between the city and the county, a longstanding dispute that actually originated prior to my coming on as city attorney in 2019, regarding whether the county had to collect on those liens in its foreclosure action. So essentially, what would happen is, somebody wouldn't pay their taxes. Many times, you end up with nuisance abatement liens, and what I mean by nuisance abatement is usually grass cutting, where we've had to go out and cut off, we've got a derelict lot, maybe a, maybe a landowner that has essentially abandoned the property. They're not cutting the grass on it, they're not paying the taxes. County comes in, forecloses on that piece of property, and the county was taking the position that because of the wording of our city ordinances and because of the fees that we were charging related to that, that they did not have to collect them as ad valorem tax liens. They weren't given the same dignity. And so, and this may be, and I, maybe the wording is ironic, but getting down in the weeds a little bit, but the dignity given to liens and the priority given to liens is important, especially when you're talking about properties that may be abandoned or may be, may be derelict or neglected. Often, when those properties sell, they sell for very low amounts, and so sometimes you're, sometimes there may be all kinds of creditors and liens involved. Well, it's important that, to the extent we can, that we get, we have our liens have as much priority as they can. Part of the agreement that we entered into in September, the county would agree that the nuisance abatement liens were of the same dignity as a lien for ad valorem taxes, so they're collected to the same extent as those. And, and so that prior to that, what was happening is, is when the county would do a tax foreclosure action, I would have to come in as city attorney. The city would essentially pay me the same hourly rate you pay me for any other work I do, to go into court and to argue it, to get our liens held in the same dignity. That makes the process a lot simpler. It's also a lot simpler for purchasers, because I know that one of the things that we've had over the years is we've had purchasers of these properties that run into questions as far as, "Well, I bought this property at tax foreclosure, did..." And the city may still say, "Well, there's still nuisance abatement liens here that weren't taken care of for that tax foreclosure," and they'll say, "Well, I thought a tax foreclosure wipes everything out." Not necessarily. So, so again, back in September, and maybe I'm kind of retreading the same ground that we've already covered, but back in September, we agreed to that with the county, and so that's a settled issue as far as the county. Last month, the Finance Department brought to my attention that our ordinances needed to be brought into conformance with that new interlocal agreement. So that's what these amendments do. Basically, essentially, what it's doing is striking the administrative fees that were set up in our ordinances. And just, just one of the things that I said to them is, like I said, the county has always taken the position that those administrative fees were the problematic part of our liens in that the, the, as far as what the city can attach as liens and what are given that dignity, what are given the dignity of an ad valorem tax lien, is very restricted in the law, and it's very, some very kind of narrow language there. And one of the things that I said, you know, looking back at it again, I said, you know, really, I see what the county has said over all these years, that it does seem, it does seem like some problematic language that could be an issue for a court. So essentially, what this does is strikes that out. We are still collecting nuisance abatement liens. We are, we are still collecting the full cost to the city to abate those liens, which is exactly what that process is for. This is just kind of bringing this into conformance with the new process that we've got, that we've got in the new simplified process. That's probably more than I needed to speak about it, but that's it in detail. I hope I haven't confused anybody, but if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Like I say, it's, it's something that has come up and kind of been a, a kind of issue kind of in the background for several years now that I hope we finally put to bed between the city and the county.
If there are no questions, we need a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025.07, amending the City of Roanoke Rapids Code of Ordinances, Chapter 96, Section 96 dot 01, 96 dot 05, and 96 dot 06.
Okay, motion on the floor is by Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, do we hear a second to our motion? Second by Mr. Bell. Is there any more discussion on this matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no, the motion would be approved. Then we'd move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening again, mayor and council. First of all, I'd just like to start out saying, sharing something publicly that I've shared with you and emailed too, but I feel comfortable now being able to say this publicly for the public's knowledge, but to date, the city, we get some questions about the impact of the federal government tax cuts and how that is going to impact our local government services and in turn, the citizens. To date, the city administration has not been notified of any interruptions or delays or interruptions to those federal funding sources that the city receives as a unit of local government. It's important to note that the City of Roanoke Rapids actively engages in various funding and grant contract work from state and federal agencies, philanthropic organizations, and other donors as well. These revenues help to diversify our, our spending and the revenue streams to create additional programming and services that help us to deliver and address emerging challenges. We're diligently complying with those federal and state and local grant criteria that are involved in that. In many grants, it's a lot of what we call red tape and a lot of due diligence involved, but we do comply with those and try to identify any challenges and opportunities that may present themselves along the way. I do want to emphasize that we do not anticipate any significant or negative impacts on our services as a result of the current federal administration and the tax, or excuse me, the cuts in spending that are occurring. We will remain transparent in this and continue to notify you as well as our staff and citizens should that change, but at this point, it's business as usual, and we don't anticipate any impacts from that in our upcoming budget preparation at this time as well. So if there's any questions, we, you know, will gladly try to answer those as best we can, but I have the full faith and confidence in our, in our city council and our staff and administrative administration to be able to adjust to any changes that come our way. We're accustomed to changes in the needs that we have, and so I hope that that does help to ease any concerns that may exist publicly. In addition to that, I just wanted to share too, a few other things. I've provided you with a bulleted list of some activities. These activities are not all-inclusive, just a few highlights. Many of the city staff last week completed a six-week AI Academy that was hosted by the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments. We learned a lot about the responsible use of artificial intelligence and different, different options and platforms for that, because as we know it, and we're still learning too, that the use of AI is more and more prevalent, especially with younger persons, and so we can only assume that our employees are using it, and responsible use is our intended goal there. Last Saturday, just want to recognize Councilman Bell and Councilman Strickland for attending and helping to assist in the American Legion's Department, North Carolina Department, the National High School Oratorial Scholarship Program. We heard from two students that were competing in a district competition, and it's nice to see young people in the community that are engaging in public speaking skills, because it's not something that usually comes naturally to many people. I have to do it for work, but it's not, it's not my comfort place, but the time was much appreciated. We also received a presentation from Withers and Ravinal last week to provide consulting services for a pavement condition study, and what this would do, and since we have about 100 miles of street, if we were to engage in a contract with them, they would evaluate all of our city's streets and prioritize and rank them for maintenance and resurfacing needs to give us a long-term plan, and also with some funding options for implementation of that. So we're looking at that for incorporation into the fiscal year 2026 budget. The rescheduling of our strategic planning workshop that was canceled due to inclement weather in February, our intended date is March the 19th, it's a Wednesday. I think the city clerk may have tried to poll each of you beforehand, but if you would, please confirm your availability. And that week as well, the consultants plan to be in town and are interested in interviewing stakeholders or local community leaders for some anonymous input into what the strategic plan and vision for the future of Roanoke Rapids should look like. We have completed the closeout of our fiscal year 19 CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Program, and we, planning staff and the fire marshal and fire department staff are working to help us with the environmental review documents that are, it's a new component there, but to, in order to get the release of funds for the upcoming project, and that includes revitalization of owner-occupied homes for qualifying homeowners. And tomorrow night, the Halifax Economic Development Commission Board of Directors will meet at 5 o'clock. With our fire department, early Sunday morning, firefighters responded to apartment complex on Old Farm Road, and were successfully able to contain the fire to the one apartment unit with minimal damage to the adjacent residents. It's unfortunate that these things happen, but we do have prompt professional staff that were able to respond and make a bad situation not as bad as it could have been. Also, over the weekend, on the Canal Trail, there's temporary closure of the Canal Trail in the River Road area due to unauthorized access and a bridge crossing by a motor vehicle. This was further complicated with attempts to remove the car, so we're, staff are assessing the conditions of the footbridge and any maintenance needs that would be there as well. I believe so, it's under, I guess, a form of investigation. I just didn't want to disclose too much, but. And additionally, along the Canal Trail, some unsafe conditions have been reported on an area that was recently repaired by the sanitary district, and that's being looked into as well. We do rely a lot on citizen complaints, and so we do encourage that, and we welcome them, especially for safety concerns. And just as a friendly reminder, motor vehicles are not allowed on the Canal Trail. This includes four-wheelers, electric bikes, mopeds, and so forth, and so enforcement action will be necessary to maintain compliance with those rules. And so we just want to, again, remind people that vehicle access is not permissible on the trail. The library is planning for its upcoming summer reading program, with the theme being Color Your World, with registration to begin June 10th. The scoreboards at the baseball fields will be shipped by the provider on April the 10th, and will be soon thereafter installed by maintenance staff.
Ms. Trainor, what does that mean, where it says, "Visit Halifax"? What are the naming rights on the scoreboard?
Just what it says, "Visit Halifax" is their tagline since it's occupancy tax-funded.
That'd be on the scoreboard?
Yes, yes, it's part of, on the naming of it, as a, as a condition of receiving the funding, the naming rights are required to be on there. It doesn't rename the field, it just has, it's basically an advertisement for the scoreboards that are funded from the occupancy tax dollars, and those four will be at Ledgerwood Field. And then also, speaking of occupancy tax funding, they're funding for pickleball courts at Rochelle Park. That project has been awarded to Ryan's Paving, and we're awaiting the contractor to schedule the work to begin there, and that will be at Rochelle Park. The multipurpose room at TJ Davis has been repainted, and the appearance is much better. This is, this room is frequently rented out for, by citizens for various events, parties, baby showers, and so forth, and so just want to recognize our Parks and Rec staff for their efforts to continuously improve with little resources there. And industrial league basketball games are occurring on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, and it's entertaining to go watch, and so I encourage you to go watch the teams. And the City of Roanoke Rapids has a team as well that is playing. Later this month, on March the 20th, the planning board will meet here in this room to discuss some strategic planning efforts as well as some training opportunities. And additionally, I'd like to report that the Code Qualification Board for Building Inspectors has revised its criteria or credentials for code enforcement officers, limiting level-one inspectors' abilities to essentially inspect commercial properties, and so this won't have an immediate impact on our services due to the training and certifications that are held by our inspectors, but statewide, it could be definitely an issue, especially in a field that is struggling to maintain and cover and have new people entering the field of code enforcement and inspections. Coming up this month too, the MAPS group is contracted with the city for the employee position and compensation study. They're working right now to develop implementation cost planning, and the findings of the study are planned to be presented to the city council during our April 1st meeting. Right now, the, this week, and starting tomorrow through Monday next week, finance director and I will be meeting with department heads about their fiscal year 2026 budget requests. We anticipate and always expect them to far exceed our available balance, but we'll summarize those findings and present those to the city council in April. And we still do not know right now what our revenues, our projected revenues will be. Additionally, the police department will host a fundraiser, a fish fry fundraiser, excuse me, it's not just the police department, but Citizens on Patrol Group will host a fish fry fundraiser on Friday, April the 11th, from 10 until 2:00. Plates are $10, and to place your order, please contact Captain Gordon Williams at And lastly, but not least, just want to recognize our Public Works Department for their strenuous efforts throughout the winter weather that we experienced over the last six weeks or so. They've really, their commitment and dedication to the city and to the services was outstanding, and not only were they brining the streets and clearing the roadways, they were able to collect all of the refuse and trash throughout the city as well, and so we, we thank them for their efforts and keeping our city safe and getting things back to normal as soon as possible. Loose Leaf Collection will continue to resume, that has gotten a little bit behind due to the weather, but, so if people are calling, you know, they can report their needs to the Public Works Department, but Loose Leaf Collection has not stopped just yet. Subject to any questions you may have, that concludes my report.
Anybody have any questions, the city manager? Any other business that needs to come before us this evening?
Mayor, I'm Donald Lee, and I would like to call you.
Okay, normally, you know, we have people to sign up for unscheduled public comment, but I'll allow you to come. We normally allow three minutes.
You can take that.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir?
Number one, I want to really amend, just, I don't know what type of fundraising efforts you're going to put in a park, but $30,000 in a small community like this is a lot of money. I do a lot of fundraising, help a lot of people, and it's very hard to take $30,000. I have never done that. Number two, if any of you haven't visited over to Mira Park and seen the conditions of that park and what those tennis courts look like, it's sad. And it's truly an embarrassment for our community. I know what projects cost, and I understand that, but when we get down to having someone who's actually put out and taken $30,000 to put towards a project, that's money the city doesn't have to give. If you were to go over there and just get it to the book, it would cost you probably a bit of, just to tear it down and start over. But when you get people, it's just like a house, a car, or anything else, once you start having people just go and be there, now all of a sudden, pride is taken. People will step up, they will do their best. It will be less maintenance in the city. It will absolutely, in my opinion, for property managers. I mean, think about the people that live there, look out the back door of their house, and they see those tennis courts in good condition. The longer we wait, reliability is there, not to mention the eyesore for the citizens and for those that want to enjoy the park. So that's all I want to say, I want to thank you all for what you're doing, I appreciate your time.
Mr. Story, would you mind, just for the record, state your name and where you live?
I'm sorry, Tracy Story, I live here in Roanoke Rapids, 718, this is how.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment. Anything else? Ms. Trainor, would it be possible to have at the next meeting, I know we're getting, you know, closer on towards budget time, and, and at each meeting, we, we have the finance information, and it shows that we have, you know, a good sizable amount of funds at this time, but I know we're still over the theater, and I know we probably still have some other debts that will be paid off in a shorter time than that, but just to be able to see how much of that money is encumbered by, you know, some debt, and how much is actually in the, the undesignedated fund balance.
Sure, be glad to do that.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'd call for a motion to adjourn at this time?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, Mr. Bell and Mr. Steinbach, motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. We stand adjourned.